Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome Dawson County Board of Commissioners work session. Today's Thursday, October the seventh, two thousand twenty-one. We appreciate those that are in attendance with us here in the room as well as those that are with us online. Can't hear me, huh? How about now? All right, now we got a little closer. We'll get right into the new business. First up, we have a presentation of a resolution of support for Amacola Falls scenic byway. Chamber of Commerce President and CEO Mandy Power, Mandy. Turn that on, please.
Thank you. How's that?
That's better.
All right, I'm so loud anyway, I didn't even notice. Well, good afternoon, thank you for taking a few moments to hear about some exciting news in a project that we are working on with some of our neighboring surrounding counties in trying to establish the Amacola Falls scenic byway, and I'll just go through the presentation. So if you're anything like me, you're like, what is a scenic byway? Well, it is a Georgia scenic byway is defined as any designated highway, street, road, or route which significantly features certain in I can never say this word.
Intrinsity.
Yes, qualities that should be protected or enhanced, and that is the official Georgia scenic byway logo that you see on there.
I like protected better than enhanced, just saying.
Well, the enhancement is actually bringing people down to share the beauty of what we have through a scenic byway. And it is, you'll see the map here in just a moment, but it takes you through each one of the counties and it points out all of the historic or any of the tourist attractions and kind of gives destinations along the way that takes them through. So they don't just come to Dawsonville and stop, they will go up through Pickens and Gilmore and the wineries and that type of thing. So just to make it easy, but some benefits of the scenic byway. Of course, we will share our natural and our cultural history and recreation opportunities, bring connectivity to the counties, broaden the travel experience, and increase tourist visitation. Help maintain, there's that word again, Sharon.
Intrinsity.
Yes, thank you. I shouldn't use words I don't know. Qualities of the byway, educate community residents and bring recognition to local natural resources and cultural assets. Recognition at the statewide level, so obviously we have G dot involved on this project as well, and ultimately enhancing tourism spending. We'd like for them to come, see our beautiful scenery, spend money, and then go home. So here is the proposed map, and let me just restate that it is proposed because we will have some community input that will go into it before we actually do the designation. But as you can see on that map, it starts actually in downtown Dawsonville at the Hall of Fame. And it goes through, as you can see, through some of the most beautiful parts of Dawson County. And then we actually are getting the benefit of having it named after one of our landmarks as the Amacola Falls scenic byway. So I just zoomed in, this is the portion that actually shows the Dawson County portion. And again, that can be changed somewhat, but that's
How many miles is that?
Somebody else asked me that, I need to, I need to drive that and kind of see, that's not something that I have
Okay.
Done. That's a good. That's a good point. So these are some of the points of interest that we've already identified along our route. Obviously, historic downtown Dawsonville, the historic courthouse, we're still trying to get with the Historical Society on all of the historical churches that we have along the route. Amacola State Park, Lynn Foot Hike-In, Fawcett Farms, obviously, Georgia Racing Hall of Fame, the Pool Room, and Burke's Pumpkin Farm are all along this proposed route. These are all of the ones in the state of Georgia that we already have. So we will not be the first. And this kind of outlines the process. We have already gotten the G dot approval on the proposed route, so we're now able to go to the application stage. And in case I haven't mentioned, I don't think I have, the Georgia Rural Center is actually helping us and facilitating it. She's kind of the one who collaboratively put it all together. So they're doing the application with the help of GMRC. They're actually going to be doing it and putting together the management plan, all of that that goes into the application process. But obviously, we're in the second step, so I'm here for local support and business support as well. And then we're also, we'll be looking for the state legislator support. And then we have to have community committee come together, lots of people along the route that may have interest in this, prepare corridor management plan. It's already a state highway, each one of them, we purposefully did it that way, so it's already maintained, it doesn't really add any extra funds that have to be allocated to maintain the highway, it's already maintained. And then like the corridor management plan will be completed by GMRC. We will have to hold two public meetings. And we'll also have to notify any property owners that are going to be along the route. The only restrictions that there are along the route going forward doesn't inhibit anything that they're able to do with their property, nothing like that. The only thing that it does inhibit is not able to put any new billboards. Not really sure that's an issue. Out that way, but if it's already there, it can stay if it's, if someone wants to put one up, it would not allow a new billboard, but that's from what I understand, the only thing that it affects. Um, there's a local advisory committee that will have, that will review the management plan as well as the map, and then we will submit for application. So once it is approved, that is very presumptuous of me, but once we get support and it does go through and it is approved, you will see these signs along the route just signifying it as the Georgia Scenic Byway and Amacola Falls Scenic Byway.
Is that a dogwood?
Yes. Looks like one.
I just wondered. I think it is.
I think it is. And of course, the route will be listed on all the tourism websites. And the state and national byway websites as well. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Mandy.
When I first heard about this and people were asking about it, there was assumption that there's new highways coming. And it's going to go straight through this pasture and straight to, I mean, it was terrible. And then, but I mean, this sounds good, and it's kind of like the hospitality.
Absolutely, yes.
It would have, so, you know, I, I think it's good, but when that was first said, it was, it was like it was a bypass.
Yes, that is absolutely, we won't change anything, we'll just be putting up a sign so people know that it's designated.
Well, the good thing about it, it's already a scenic byway, basically would just be named.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Getting it named. And hopefully that by in itself would draw more people, because a lot of people look at that and they say, oh, that's the same thing, let's go check that out, I've never been.
Yeah.
And so
I never would have thought that before I took this job, but I will hundred and ten percent say, yes, they really do. People look it up and try to go through, and I feel very lucky that even among all the counties, it will be named after a Dawson County landmark, so.
Which is the number one, this is the state park.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it was.
Boy, you know that because you can't get in on the weekends.
We're very lucky, very lucky to have it.
Busy little room.
Yes, it is.
Other questions from Andy? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Matt, how long you think this is, do you have any idea about the timeline of this? How long it's going to take?
I would say probably six months, just depending upon how quick everyone gets the resolution support and then getting the committees. And the longest part is holding the two public meetings so that we can be sure that everyone is, is good.
Where will those be?
Well, they said we could have one locally, and then we could have one in the middle for all of the counties together combined, so I haven't got that far yet.
Okay, so it's Dawson, Gilmer, and Pickens, so just, just the three.
And we've already met and worked together.
Is that a resolution from each county or a trial resolution of all three counties?
One, a support from each.
Okay.
We're all getting our own.
So have we got any type of a draft for that?
Yes, I'll get that over to, I have to, yes, I'll get it over to Krista.
I can't read a map, I don't know anything. Does that come across Burt Mountain by any chance? From Pickens to that, because that is, that is so beautiful, ooh, when the leaves turn.
It really is.
If you love to look at them, you better not be driving. Have somebody else to drive you, and when the sun filters through those leaves and they're gold, it's just, it just glows, it is so beautiful.
That is definitely not the place to run off the road.
No, it's not, you, you have to pay attention, but it is so pretty and, yeah, so I just, I'm wondering, so that is part of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm excited about it.
Awesome, awesome, I'll keep you posted on it.
Get her that resolution so she can get it to
Yes, I apologize.
Look at.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Presentation of a resolution to adopt a greenway and trail master plan, planning and development, Robbie Irvin and Development Authority of Dawson County, Ms. Mandy, you're going to be a part of that as well.
Didn't get out of that easy. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, glad to be before you again tonight. I've been, I've been asked before, do I ever get nervous doing this? No, because I have to take my glasses off to read this, so then y'all are all not a big, not a big problem at all. No, I dare not do that. So in early twenty twenty, the Development Authority initiated a comprehensive economic development plan study which identified the need for a greenway and trails plan for the county. The Development Authority then contracted with Thomas and Hutton to develop a plan. The plan has been developed. The county staff has, has reviewed it. And county staff was actually part of the committee that, that looked at the possible routes and that sort of thing for the plan, so we're comfortable with it, we like what we see in the plan, and tonight I'm here to ask you guys to approve or put for public hearing an approval of a resolution to adopt this master plan so that we then as, as the planning department can use this as one of the tools in our tool belt to help as development comes in, give them ideas of, hey, we'd like to see you add some trail space to your development and try to get all these parts and pieces kind of combined and, and put together into a really nice trail system. I have a presentation. If you'd like to see it, of the, I don't know how many of you have actually seen the final draft of the plan, but we can go through it quickly.
Is that it? What, what's loaded in?
This is it, what's loaded?
Well, I've seen it.
You've seen it?
Because I read it. Not all of it, but
Right.
Okay.
We're looking at basically nineteen point six miles of trails that are mainly focused around the southeastern portion of the county. They are comprised of several different elements, I'm just going to skip on down to, to the planning considerations and how we got where we got. We had a planning process, a stakeholder meeting, again, like I say, county staff was involved in the stakeholder meetings. Former Director Jameson Kinley, myself, we had folks from Etowah Water from the Economic Development Authority, from the Chamber of Commerce, from, from lots of different groups came together to kind of set this up. Thomas and Hutton then did all the data collection and ciphering, figuring, and all that sort of thing. And the master plan was developed. They saw several points of interest to kind of center this master plan around, one being the Outlet Mall, second being Dawson Forest, the third being Thompson Creek Park and Boat Ramp, the fourth Etowah River, the fifth Rock Creek Park, and the sixth, the future Russell Creek Reservoir. So moving on. They developed in this master plan, six trail segments, five of which are, are current and one slated as future, that being the one to the Russell Creek Reservoir because it obviously hasn't been built yet. So we've got the Dawson Forest Trail, the Etowah River Trail, the Georgia four hundred, the Thompson Creek Park Trail, the Highway fifty-three Trail, and then again, the future connection to Russell Creek. There are several different types of paths proposed. Side paths along roadways, boardwalk sections in your wetland areas, off-road greenways, which are concrete or asphalt material. River trails, which are more porous material to prevent pollutants and that sort of thing from getting in the rivers. And then to go on to the segments, we've got the Dawson Forest segment here, you can see it going from the backside of the Outlet Mall down to Dawson Forest. So we can get our deer hunters up to the Outlet Mall to do some shopping for their wives when they're done deer hunting. And the, the master plan breaks it down into different segments, you'll see each segment shows us the typical type of, of pathway that they're proposing, the distance of that segment, and then a cost per mile or a cost, a total cost for that segment. Moving on to the second one, is the Etowah River South Trail. See now, see, I can't see that, but I can see this. Yeah. Then the Rock Creek Park. Again, segment two is the Etowah River Trail. And it details the different segments and the costs and the materials of those on and on, Georgia four hundred, the Thompson Creek Park all the way through the fifty-three trail system. It, to, to let you know, the, the one along four hundred and fifty-three will be segments that are mainly along the sides of the roadways, they won't really venture off much from the roadway. But a lot of the other segments are going to go through open country back along water sewer easements and those sorts of things as much as possible to connect these, these points together. We'll go on to the implement, implementation strategies toward the end. Funding. There are several key economic benefits to the trails, increased property values. Makes the communities more attractive. It, it does lots of things to enhance our community to have these trails here. As far as funding, we're here to ask for sixty million dollars to complete the trail. No, we actually, there are several different ways to, to fund them, some through local assistance, obviously, general funds, lost requirements on permits, you know, additional fees and that sort of thing that can be done at the local level, then through state monies and grants through DOT and, and the Georgia Recreational Trails Program, and then federal funding through USDOT and several other federal programs. The next steps after today, we, we've had the the acceptance of the plan by the Development Authority, we're asking you to adopt a resolution for the plan. We'll have an implementation committee put together, probably be a lot of the stakeholders initially. From the planning department, we'll be making sure our local ordinances kind of jive with it have it where we can easily implement the trail plan when development comes in. And then looking for funding sources and acquiring parcels of land and applying for grants and that sort of thing. Again, it's a little over sixty million dollar project overall. But we think a lot of the costs can be gotten from outside sources. I know that we have some developers right now that are saying, hey, do you have a trails plan? We'd like to get in on that. Jim King's Development at Dawson Forest and fifty-three, they're incorporating parts of the development into the trail plan, so we're getting a lot of buy-in from, from the development community and the citizens of the, as a whole, so we'll hope to, to get this funded and get it, get it underway and, and have a really great trail system for this area. So if you have any other questions, I'm glad to answer. I'm about winded, so if Mandy has anything to say, we'll let her say anything.
Questions for the board?
Not a question, but just, just a a comment, you know, at our, I had a conversation with a guy the other day, and on our farm in Kentucky, we planted chestnut trees, and chestnut trees don't grow overnight. So I think that a plan like this is ambitious, and it's something that you've got to start at some point. But the main thing is it, it doesn't happen overnight, but we got to take a first step somewhere. And just like that chestnut tree will grow and future generations will be able to enjoy it, we won't be able to in our lifetime, but future generations will be able to enjoy a trail system that that I think is a good thing for Dawson County to engage in.
Exactly, and, and that's the reason why too, in, in the master plan, it is segmented. You know, obviously, we'll probably get the segments that are closest to Georgia four hundred, the Outlet Mall and those areas done first. And any parts that, you know, development is near, we'll get those done first, and in the outline areas we'll have to work on with grants and things of that nature, but I agree, yes, it's just an ambitious plan that's going to take, it's not going to happen overnight, it's going to take a while, but it's worth doing.
Is it, is it walk-in, just walk-in, or is it bicycles?
It's a multi-use trail.
Okay, and is it anything with motors on it?
No, the only thing with motors on it would be the sheriff's office can have access to it if they need to, if there's an emergency, a sheriff's
Wheelchair people.
MS, you know.
Motorized wheelchair.
Wheelchair people, yes, they could, they could
But you're not talking about motorcycles.
Some that
No cars.
Just because, you know, Nelson County is a bit healing.
Well, that was one of the things when I looked at, and I read through the whole plan. You know, one, one of the things that stuck, stuck, stuck out at me was it was twelve foot wide, and so that gave me a little concern about some of the people that might think they decide they're going to make a driveway out of it. So I mean, that might be something we look at as we go into the future, maybe it'd be an eight foot versus twelve foot or something along
And part of the
That line, but just great idea.
Right.
Great idea and a great time to start, as Commissioner Gaines has said, we've got businesses that are coming along in this corridor and a lot of these corridors. And, you know, like I said, I think you'll get by, I think, you know, they're wanting people to come to their business whether they're walking or riding. And so I think it's a great idea.
One thing that Thomas and Hunt and Ryan that did the plan for us officially, this is like the Cadillac version, right? So you see the twelve feet, you see what it's comprised of, the concrete, like that would be ultimate, we can do various, we wanted at least ten foot just because that gives bicyclists enough room, but we can always change it from the size to the material to whatever, this is just
Well, there's a lot of trail grant money out there, I mean, there's a lot of trail grant money out there.
Absolutely.
I think it's old slide number, was my slide number two, this number, number two, map there, the green space and trail. Where's the priority development area? What is that?
All right.
I'll page this there.
It's page two is what it's numbered at, but it's not the second slide.
Tony, come up here. So that everybody can hear you at home too.
Part of our strategic plan was also to identify areas for development, and this was occurred before that for the Development Authority. It talked about development, particularly in, not residential, but industrial and commercial and those types of things. And that was a, a carryover from that plan.
Okay.
Thought it was a splotching map.
You never know. Some of those areas, they, they would probably like a trail too.
Yeah.
I'm just curious what that actually meant as far as, you know, in relation to the trail.
I think the same group that did that study, did the trail study from what I recall. And so there was probably some already knowledge that existed that they overlaid to show how they interacted.
Well, yeah, and another great function of it that didn't get mentioned is safety. We have a lot of bicycle people that are very much interested in riding back and forth, and they do ride back and forth. And then most of you are probably like me, you come around a curve and there they are. And so you're making evasive maneuvers. So this would be a great opportunity and a, and a very good ride for those enthusiasts that like to ride a long ways. A little further than I probably ride mine, but, but great for them that do ride that far.
Did anyone talk with City of Atlanta on the Dawson Forest Track? I mean, is that something? They want to keep that for their Well, that is, that is pace, or will they get, they get credit for air, air, air quality? But I know that, you know, they would, might be some money out there for some trails.
That is an endpoint for our system, but I don't know that we went that far as to discuss with them integration of the two.
You have.
We had discussions with the people that, that it's two agencies in Dawson Forest itself. And so we had the initial discussions, not about linkage, but as a destination, because the idea of the plans are to connect different points of interest. But not in a way that you have to drive within an automobile, but you could walk or you could use other transportation. And also, we've had conversations with Forsyth County, their trail ends right at Dawson Forest. So we have some connectivity things that we're going to have to discuss and hammer out with them as well.
Yeah, and usually on those, I don't really mention the twelve feet, but usually for merchants, service vehicles and sheriff vehicles, they'll do that twelve, and they put a barricade at the, the big poles that they can remove to get the emergency vehicle on there, but the poles stay.
Yes, or they'll have bollards and
They're locked, but same way with the management areas, they have a lock that public safety can get open.
Right.
Nobody else can. But they'll put those in front with the bicycles can go through, but a car can't until it's needed.
Exactly.
Does Forsyth County already have something like this in place?
That's one of their number one attractions. And you, when you look at what is attractive to business development, light industrial and things like that, your corporations, one of their, used to be school system was ranked as one of their top things. And now it's, yeah, now it's trail systems is one of the number, was it number three, Tony, in the, in the scale that they look for?
Long Island County just announced a public private partnership for their reservoir trail. It's seventy-two point eight million dollar.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a economic benefit long-term to attract your corporations, things like that, that you, you might want to go after.
How many miles in Forsyth County do you know? I mean, how many miles?
It's, it's a lot.
In Forsyth.
Yeah, the Greenway Trail System, they've been working on that for years and it's, it's, it's a lot. It's, it's ongoing. It's a big one. It's, I mean, it continues. I mean, anytime they can add to it, they, they add to it. Having the plan in place now and then encouraging, stipulating developers to participate in that is really the way that you get the best, best bang for the buck. But you got to have that plan in place to facilitate some conversation.
I would say this would put us ahead of where they were at when they started their trail system.
Absolutely.
By a long shot, so.
A lot of your communities that have benefited from it, low hanging fruit have been ones that have had discarded rail systems. And so they had, they had railways that were no longer being used, and it was very easy for them. They already had the right of way. They pulled the tracks up and then they put down concrete. And so communities that have had that have benefited greatly almost overnight in that aspect. We don't have that. So it's a different animal, but this benefits the same.
But we do have the, the water sewer easements and that sort of thing. And, and that would be a big part of the, the Dawson Forest Trail would be that line that runs from the outlet mall down to, you know, station down at Rock Creek.
Yep.
Is, is this, is this, you know, you, you already got trees in place and things like that? Or is this going to be landscaping and planting under trees? I know you.
Probably both. Well, they're probably, yes, they're probably a little bit of both. And a lot of it will be natural, going through natural areas.
That's good.
There'll, there'll be probably parts of it that will need some landscaping and, and the like. So, yeah, you'll probably see a bit of both.
And as developments come in, this is, this is again, not set in stones. We've already had some instances of developments coming in saying, well, what if we did it, you know, around this way? Because they on the property can give us access, then we certainly can do that because walking along Dawson Forest may not be the best method, but we could weave it through there. So this is just an idea. As developments come in, we certainly could change it and make it more fit to what we have there.
And again, I mean, we had that, you mentioned the development there at fifty-three in Dawson Forest. You know, they, they incorporated into their plan, but there was a, they needed to extend a a drainage in order to cross that. And in one of our stipulations was that they pay, and that's a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost.
Yeah.
For them to be able to do that. So we do have some abilities to, as these developers come in, that we can utilize some of our stipulations to encourage them to do that.
But these developers realize the benefits, as you were saying. So they, it usually doesn't take very much to get them on board.
Yeah.
When we're sharing the sewer easement, power easements are already clear.
Yeah.
So I guess.
Use that. I don't know if you want to be under power lines and stuff, do you? I don't know, maybe that, maybe it not in the boonies they're buried, but where I live, they're up in the sky. So.
They're riding that bicycle, they're just riding. They're enjoying that ride.
Get out there and enjoy it.
Somewhat.
Some tightrope walkers.
Yeah. The Walenders, yeah.
Any other questions for Mandy or Rob? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
And they did provide you with a sample ordinance or resolution there as well. Next up, we have presentation of annual capital improvements element adoption, planning and development director Sharon Fair. Sharon?
Good evening. Not really a presentation. We are back. You previously passed the resolution to transmit the draft. There were no substantive comments back from Georgia Regional Mountain. So what we need tonight is approval to adopt.
Adopt and send back.
And send back, yes.
Okay.
And that needs to not, is that what you said?
Yes, we, we transmitted. It's all good to go. Then we need the second step of adoption and the signature.
So do you want us to move that to the agenda for tonight, or is it something that can wait?
That's what I was saying.
Move to the agenda, yes.
Okay. Good with that? Y'all good with that? Okay.
She meant anyway, when she said tonight.
All right, that'll work. Questions? Any other? Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, we have presentation of RFP number three eight eight dash two one, design bill services for Etowah River Park canoe launch ramp. Parking Recreation Director Matt Payne and Purchasing Manager Melissa Hawke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mission, appreciate it as always, you allowing us to present to you guys what's going on at the Parks and Rec Department. As you know, let me just go ahead and jump into the slides. As you know, in a, in a shortened version, the board approves Flosse six overage funds in the amount of fifteen million.
One million.
I mean, whoo, yeah.
One million, five hundred ninety-five thousand.
You had that much more money.
There you go.
Okay.
Yeah, dream all.
Yeah, one point five million to, to cover a couple of projects that we were, we were working on facilities to build a current ramp. Well, we, the facilities built this current ramp that at the Etowah River about seventeen years ago, and it has held up very well. I think Mr. Talbert did a fantastic job of building that with what he had. But as you know, water and wood typically turns into a mess. And that's what we kind of have now. It's still very much usable to the public, and it is not a safety issue at all, but it is time to repair our, our, put in. So the third slide, of course, we did, this bid was according to policy. Ms. Melissa Hawke made sure that everything was taken care of accordingly. On a, we did specify that we work with one general contractor to be doing all of the work. Some of the scope of this work includes a preliminary design phase, the, to draft the drawings for the work to be performed. The material to be used will be a cast-in-place concrete. And for the wing walls and for the ramp, and the storm and erosion control plans will be developed also in this phase. We will be working on the detailed schematic design phase, the updated draw, the updated draft drawings with all necessary changes for the design phase. And then, of course, the final design phase will be of approving of the drawings, the detailed cost estimate, description of materials and equipment for the construction phase. The construction phase will be a turnkey project and will be completed by spring of twenty twenty-two. So next spring, we're going to have the people jumping right back into the water. And we plan to begin, we plan to begin this process, hopefully later on this fall and work on it during the winter months. As you know, this is the location of it. If you're not familiar, this is Highway nine, south headed from Dawsonville. And if you've ever been by there from really from about the months of April till really now, it is really, really crowded. One of the more highly used per capita parks that we have. Lot of folks really enjoy this park for their, their canoeing, kayaking. And with the pavilion that is there, we have a lot of folks that just do, you know, little small gatherings and with, it's a highly used park, and we really enjoy having this park. So we did receive two bids on this particular project with triscapes being the lowest of the bid. The two bids for a turnkey project of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We did a technical score. We did technical scoring on these guys because there was a whole lot more involved in this than just a basic building. So they did receive the highest combined score and the staff recommendation, the staff respectfully request that the board to accept proposal, the proposal submitted to award a contract to triscapes in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars with a contingency of forty-five thousand, not to exceed the amount of two hundred and five thousand. Now that forty-five thousand is on the backside, just simply because you were dealing with water and you're dealing with a river. And sometimes you dig into things that you're just not prepared for. So we did add a little bit on the backside of that. That contingency, of course, has to come through me, then present to you before we could dip into that. So we are requesting, respectfully requesting that you guys would consider the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to triscapes. And I'll be thrilled to entertain any questions that you may have.
Questions for Matt?
There, just a side note, back to our trails thing, the Etowah River is considered a water trail that is on a system, and I think this is one of their takeout points of interest too. So not only do we have walking trails, but there's water trails that's already existing there.
Thank you.
Other questions for Matt? Thanks, sir.
Thank you for having.
Next up, we have presentation of twenty twenty-two payroll and holiday calendar, not the interim anymore. You, Human Resources Director Kristy Finn.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Yes, I'm here to present the twenty twenty-two payroll and holiday calendar for approval. Our twenty twenty-two calendar is going to represent twenty-six pay periods. These have already been reviewed by our finance department and approved. And also our holiday schedule is going to include twelve holidays and one floating holiday. And this holiday calendar reflects the twenty twenty-one calendar.
Questions? For our new human resources director.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Sorry, Dave, I probably took that away from you. You can repeat it.
Yes.
We didn't clap, we haven't clapped for you yet, unless you want me to go ahead and do that. Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have presentation proposed FY twenty twenty-two budget. That's my turn. Let me go down here so I can play with the click. All right. Good afternoon, board and citizens. As you know, we're required every year to put together a balanced budget, which requires much work from all of our department heads and especially our finance department. And they do such a great job, Vicky and Natalie and her staff. And we thank y'all as well for your participation in all the meetings that we had to prepare this budget. All right, we have budget goals. Obviously, we want to have a realistic revenue-based budget. We want to make sure our budget conforms to our reduced mileage rate. We went from seven point eight eight five down to seven point six two five. We will provide the same or improved level of funding for all of our departments, thus improving their level of service. Since I've been on this board and with your help, I think each year we have improved the level of service with the budgeting process and made the service delivery that our departments give to the citizens much better. We provided all of our departments and agencies the opportunity to present their budgets to the full board, which is something that we started when I become chairman. And so I appreciate their willingness to do that and your willingness to be a part of that process. As with any bu, lost. As with any budget, you obviously have challenges. Increased personnel costs, as the board is well aware, throughout this year, we've done several things already to meet some of those. And I'm going to be asking you to do some more for those people that we haven't done anything for up until this point and a little bit later in this budget. Always have increasing operational needs in the multiple departments, and you saw that with the request that you all had copies of. And then we got to try to foresee any changes that may come along with our revenue sources and be able to move and adapt to that as we go forward throughout the year. And we've talked about that on several occasions, being able to make changes if we need to. The general fund is obviously our main operating fund for the county. All of the property tax that's collected goes into the general fund. And you can see there that the property tax provides thirty-nine point one seven percent of the revenue needed to make up the general fund and the data operation that we have here in the county. Where'd we start from? Here we go. Where'd we get started from? General fund operating request totaled twenty-six million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. We had over five point four million in capital requests, two point six million in new personnel and salary change requests. You see there, our original twenty twenty-one budget was thirty million, seven eighty-eight, oh, three, one, and that's been changed throughout this year, and we're up to thirty-two, one, fourteen, eight, thirty-four. So we will see changes throughout the year. We always do. One of the things that I'm very glad that this board has been very good at is that is telling our staff, when you need something, come and ask them. And they've been willing to work with them and make those changes as we need to. In twenty twenty-one, the county received word that we would receive five million dollars from the federal government, and we did. As part of the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA, if you remember that. And then this proposed budget, those funds are programmed to cover the salary increases that we provided to first responders, including the sheriff's officers. And then this proposed budget, those funds are programmed to cover the salary increases that we provided to first responders, including the sheriff's officers, emergency services and public works, and nine one one as part of that. The cost total over a million and a half for twenty twenty two, and our budgeted in the special revenue fund two thirty. This funding will cover these costs for the next three years, and that's something we talked about in the board approved. The proposed budget that I'm going to be giving you tonight includes a fund balance use of five hundred and thirty four thousand and seventeen dollars. That's the smallest amount that I brought to you in the five or four years that I've actually done a budget. Usually, and in that four years, we have never used any of the fund balance. We've always come in under that. So our revenues have always been better, and the staff has always done a really good job managing their budgets to keep us from having to use those fund balance funds. And so one of the things that we do when we create a budget, especially on the revenue side, is we budget the revenue very conservatively. Vicky and I talk about that, and she's more conservative than me, but we we do that conservatively to make sure that we can cover what we need to cover. Here are the general fund revenues. And you can see that down at the bottom, there's a one million, three hundred and eighty seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty two dollar change from the original budget of twenty twenty one. And you'll see that like with property taxes, about a three hundred something thousand dollar increase. Our biggest increase in revenues, local option sales tax, which is part of what's used to operate the daily operation of general fund. Other taxes and things like that, and that adds up to the balancing that we will see at the end of this budget. With that use of a small amount, use of fund balance to make it balance. Here's the percentages. Property taxes, thirty nine percent, local often sales tax, twenty nine percent, and then other taxes, sixteen are the big ones that help us generate that thirty two million dollar revenue number. These are the expenditures by function. We talk about function, we talk breaking them down into general government, and we'll break that down even further here in a minute so you can see the what's in each one of these functions. Judicial, public safety. Another public safety, which would be fire and EMS, public works, health and welfare, recreational culture, housing and development, and then transfer outs. Transfer outs are things that go out from the general fund as we do, like transfers to grants, the matching and different things like that. And there's a list of those that you will see as well in this. Here's the general government. You'll see the departments that fall under general government. Order Commissioners, County Administration, Elections Register, General Government Finance, Information Technology, HR, Tax Commissioner, Tax Assessor, Board of Equalization, Risk Management, Facilities and Public Relations. Those are the ones that fall under general government. Next one is judicial. That's obviously all of the departments that have to do with our court system. Superior Court, Clerk of Court, District Attorney, Magistrate, Probate, Juvenile and Public Defender. Public Safety. This is the Marshal's Office, Fire, Fire Marshal and Prevention, EMS, Coroner, EMA, and Humane Society. And the Sheriff, the Sheriff has many different departments, and they're all listed here. Sheriff, K nine, Jail, Traffic Management, Resource Officers, Donations, Court Services and Special Event Officers. And you'll see throughout these, you'll see where it says donations in a lot of different departments, and there's nothing budgeted in those. Those numbers are not added until that donation actually comes in. So that's the reason you see those being blank. Public Works, you have Administration, Road Department, and then keep Dawson County beautiful in that one. Health and Welfare, Health Department, the Good Shepherd Clinic, Evita, CASA, Defex, No One Alone, Indigent Welfare, Senior Center, Senior Center Services, Donations, and then Medicare Silver Sneakers, all part of Health and Welfare. Function. The Culture and Recreation, you have the Park, Park Donations, the Park Women's Club, Park Pool, War Hill Park, and the Library are all part of Culture and Recreation in that function. Then we have Housing and Development, it's County Extension Office, Planning and Development Office, and then the Development Authority. They're all part of that particular function. Then other financing uses, these are the transfers out that we talked about. You'll see money that's transferred out to Family Connection, to Grants, Capital, Fleet, E nine one one, and the GIs. And what those totals all add up to in each one of those. Here is your expenditure allocation. Obviously, the Sheriff's Office is the biggest piece of the pie, twenty eight percent. And then General Government at twenty, and then Public Safety is at nineteen, and Judicial is at twelve. And then the others range anywhere from six percent down to one percent of the budget. Here's some of the budget highlights. I'm proposing to you tonight nine new positions, and we'll go over those nine positions in just a minute. I'm also asking you to provide one dollar per hour to each full time and part time employee that did not receive increase from the COVID fund. That comes to three hundred and forty one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars, and that's approximately about a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy five employees, if I remember the number correctly, somewhere in that neighborhood.
How many hundred seventy?
Hundred and seventy to a hundred and seventy five people that we have not done anything for up until this point. And this only includes those people that we have not already taken care of. And you remember, you've already taken care of the Sheriff's Office, E nine one one, Public Works, Fire, and EMS, and you've done all that already. So second, I'm asking you to provide a contingency to the county manager. If you remember, we talked about in the budget process of those salary increases, there were twelve requests for salary increases. And we talked about the fact that the board need need to be making that decision on who did and who didn't, and that need to be through a process. And so I'm asking you to provide seventy five thousand dollars. The county manager will develop a plan for that and how they can ask for that. Now, if you do the dollar an hour, so a lot of that's going to be taken care of in that. So he can develop his plan around that, and those people can still come and ask, but they'll have to come to him and provide justification of why they're asking for that salary increase for that particular person that works for them. And one thing that that does do for us, and as we look forward and move forward, and we've talked about this some, and this is a step in the right direction toward that. You know, we've for years here done personnel evaluations through our departments, and they've had very little meaning of what we've been doing in the past. We want to work towards that. This is a first step towards that. So maybe next year, we can get a little deeper into that and give the county manager the money he needs to make the valuation worth something. Because we can always look at, you know, what is the Consumer Price Index? You know, if that's at one percent or less than one percent or whatever that might be, and work away from that and then go from there based on that person's evaluation of what type of raise they're going to get. Because one of the things that David's done this year, and he's taught his staff about, is how to actually fill out evaluation. And, you know, everybody doesn't get a five. And if you get a five, you got to put some justification down to show why that person got a five in some of their stuff. Nobody's perfect. There's always room for improvement. I was telling David a story today when we were talking about that, that not a county manager who gave me a five all the way down one time, and I'm going, I told him then, I said, no, I'm not a five all the way. Nobody's perfect. And so I said, no, I think it was just, he was in a hurry to get it done because it had no value. And so we want to put some value to it. All right. So I'm asking you to do seventy five thousand dollars there. One point five million of personnel costs for first responders that moved from the general fund to that special fund. That's something you've already approved. And then we'll go over many capital requests proposed to be funded out of the Splot Six overage here in just a few minutes that I'm going to propose to you. Here are the new personnel that I'm proposing to you. The County Marshal, as you know, we talked about, and I think was pretty unanimous in the fact that we would like for that to come out from under planning and go under the county manager, which means that we need someone to be the head of that. And that's what this part, this would do here, and that includes benefits and all the equipment that that person would need. We already have space for that. We've talked a lot over the last few years about being proactive when it came to keeping up with what's going on and the complaints that we receive instead of reactive, instead of just waiting for somebody to call. We want to be out there, and we know development's going on. We want to be out there. We want to be looking at it and be ahead of it and catch the problems before we get a bunch of phone calls about that. So that's what this will do, and that'll put that department by itself. Next, upgrade a part time custodian to full time. We did that once already for Mr. Talbert. I'm going to request that you do this other position that he has from part time to full time. It is very difficult to keep somebody in those part time positions, and this will give him the opportunity to have a solid staff to keep all this stuff that we need kept clean, and they do a great job. I mean, you couldn't ask for a better person to be in charge of facilities than we have. He does a great job. Next, I'm asking you to add a general mechanic to fleet. Got a lot of pieces of equipment in this county. And the story about our administrative assistant turning ranches didn't set very well. I don't think that's what we need. We need a mechanic out there to do that, give Shannon the help that he needs to be able to keep the fleet running. Him and Scotty have done a fabulous job by themselves for a very long time, and it's time to give them some help. IT, I'm recommending two positions for them. They asked for four, but I'm recommending two, a network administrator and an IT technician. You are aware, but I'm not sure if everyone else is aware that IT is a twenty four seven, three sixty five day operation. Somebody is always available from IT. Now, they they currently have four people, so that probably much puts them fairly thin. This will give them the ability to have a day or two off occasionally, plus have enough people to take care of our network that we have here, which is growing on a regular basis. And this will give Herman a good start towards that, and we can work forward to getting to what they actually need all along. But these two, I think, would be great. Next, the Senior Judicial Assistant in Juvenile Court. You heard our juvenile court judge talk about that a lot of times they didn't have anybody in that office at all, obviously, because they're got help loaned to them out of the Clerk of Court's office. And that young lady has done an excellent job for them, as as the juvenile judge said, but it's time for them to have a person there as well. In planning, I'm recommending a front desk clerk. As you know, planning is a busy department at the moment and stays that way as long as we have a good economy. Public Defender, a legal assistant for them. They too have times where they don't have anybody at the phone or at the desk, and so this will help them with that as well. Pretrial Officer for Superior Court was a pretrial officer do. Well, pretrial officer is someone who, those people that are out of jail are under this person's guidance. They take care of that. I think Superior Court said we had like three hundred and something people in Dawson County that were in this system currently. So that's a lot of folks to watch, and then we're working on a few other things that might increase that number, so they need this person. We're working on some things that like citations for misdemeanors and different things like that, instead of locking people up. So we're, I think that'll go a long way. And this is a kind of position that will eventually pay for itself, because you keep people out of jail, and you're not feeding them, and you're not housing them, and you're saving money there, and this will help pay for that. So those are the nine new personnel positions that I am proposing to you. There were others, obviously, all important. But and if there's, you know, any that you would like to add to my list as we go through this process, feel free to bring that up, and it can always be discussed. Move on to the Capital Projects Fund. Capital Projects are funded by transfers out of the general fund. This budget proposes two items to be purchased using capital projects funds. And we'll talk about some items to be purchased with Splot Six overages here in just a minute. But in Splot Six, you have to stay within the categories. You have to stay within the guidelines that are associated with Splot Six. These two items, I did not feel fail within these, but they are two items that we need. First one being a vehicle for the tax assessor. That was on Shannon's Priority One list for them to have that Priority One and Priority Two list. And so I'm proposing to you that we fund that vehicle out of general fund. The Sheriff's X-ray machine and metal detector for the courthouse, it sounds like they're put together with baling wire and barely holding on. So we're waiting for them to just collapse completely. So when you, when you're at a point where you can't afford to turn it off, because you don't think it's going to come back on, there's a problem. So it's time to fix that, and so I'm proposing that we do that through capital projects funds out of general fund. Splot Six. Splot Six collections, they ended, as you know, June the thirtieth of this year. Numerous capital project requests are proposed to be paid out of the Splot Six overages, and we're going to go over those in just a second. The overage was four billion, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty three dollars. Now, here's what I'm going to propose to you for uses of the Splot Six overages, and this is over a couple of pages here. The ladder truck that we purchased last year, you approved on January the twenty first, two thousand and twenty one, for that to come out of the overages of Splot. So that's all, that's already been spent. We already have that truck. So that's part of that four point nine million dollar. And as Matt said a while ago, not fifteen million, but one point five nine five million, this board approved for him to do some projects out of the overage as well, and that was approved on May the sixth of this year, two thousand and twenty one. So that hangs off of the top. Then there is mandatory, you have to pay off debt that falls within the system of what you were doing at Splot. So we have two hundred and sixty eight thousand dollar fire truck debt. We have to pay that off. That's mandatory. So that's an item number three that you see there. Now, Fleet Priority One and Two Vehicle List. There are four more vehicles, all of them public works or transfer station. Well, if you remember, Splot Six had vehicles and equipment for public works. So that's where I'm proposing that three hundred and seven thousand dollars for those other four remaining Priority One and Priority Two vehicles that Shannon gave us the list on. The lift truck, forklift, whichever way you want to call it, is a vehicle, is is a piece of equipment that will be used by public works as well as fleet. It could even be used by facilities in a need if they needed it as well. So that's a multipurpose thing. That's something they need. Also falls under, like I said, public works can use that, so it falls under equipment. It falls within the guidelines. That's forty thousand dollars. Mercy Services, we fall under vehicles and equipment, turnout gear, SCBA air cylinders and SCBA four point five replacement, all things that go on a fire truck. All equipment associated with that, so I'm requesting that you fund a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars for those three different items. Next, we go down to information technology. Every meeting almost, we talk about some technology failure of some sort or something that's fixing to be outdated or something that needs to be improved. We had several items that were in the five plus something million dollar requests and capital that were IT related, IT technology stuff. Not all asked for by IT, but asked for by different departments. But what I did is I put all them under IT, because IT's going to have to deal with all those. And so I put all them under IT. You see the system wide backup. I think that's something other that we're going to hear about here real soon, because that's something we need done immediately. The wired network infrastructure upgrade, conference room technology upgrades, desk phone upgrades, computer upgrades, assembly room upgrade, and then AV upgrades to courtroom C, which was actually asked for by Superior Court, but I moved it over in this to IT as well as the assembly room upgrade. So the ghosts have not messed with us today in the assembly room, but they did there for a day or two. So that totals five hundred and twenty one thousand, two hundred and forty one dollars of that. Move it on to page two. Sheriff. Sheriff, right here, taser program, body cameras, and laptops for patrol cars. Vehicles and equipment, all equipment that's used by his deputies that are out there in the road, out there on the road. So I'm proposing that $242,002. Now, he had a Solocom, which is an E-911. Sorry. There you go, page two. All right, I got ahead of myself. Anyway. So we'll talk about that in a few minutes because that can be funded out of Splotch Seven. So those are the things that I'm proposing to be funded out of the, out of Splotch Six overage. Public Works, Storm Truck, two Tipton trailers, and the leasing of some equipment to keep their operation running. We've needed a storm truck for a very long time in this county because we tend to have a few of those from time to time, and we have a lot of tree trouble and a lot of things like that. So this will be a good item for them, and that total is $430,400. Now, that still doesn't spend all the overs. That leaves $318,054. And some of these departments still have money that they hadn't spent from the original portion of Splotch, and they're working that out. I didn't bring you that list, but that can be given to you if you need it. I wanted to have a contingency at the end because it's a well-known fact that some of these projects always tend to go over sometimes. So it's always better to have a little bit of money left over that you can put somewhere else whenever you want to, once we get down to the final dollar amount on that, and not spend everything that you actually have. So I left $318,050 for contingency. Splotch Seven. Splotch Seven, as you know, began July the 1st, 2021. We budgeted $9,500,000 to be received in 2022. Majority of that will go to our Level Two project. We must get the 8.5 million that we have in a Level Two project, the EOC 911 Center slash Radio project. And then after that, we have an agreement with the city that we'll do a million and a half first to them before we start doing anything else. So that's pretty much, as she says here, only Operation Center Communication upgrades will be in the progress in 2022. Talk a little bit about the Solocom that the Sheriff asked for as the number one. It's not up there, but I wrote it down as a note. That's an E-911 thing that they need now, according to make their system work better. And as the Sheriff said, that is a transferable item that could go when we build a new center. So I'm going to ask that you do that $190,000, or I'm going to ask the Sheriff make a presentation to you at a later date for that, and you can fund that through Splotch Seven. So I'm not putting that actually in this budget, but I'm asking him to make, I'll ask him to make that presentation to you at a later date. He can work with our purchasing department to get that done.
Is that funding it now and then repaying it in Splotch Seven? Is it, since it's an immediate need?
Well, Splotch, we have money coming in now for Splotch Seven. That's part of that, you know, as we use Splotch Funds to pay for our radio plan that's being put together. We can do that now because we already got enough money coming in to handle that. So we could, we could do that now. Grant Transfers, these are the grants that we get, and you'll see the county match that's associated with those. It's always good to be able to get $2,400,000 at only a $782,000 cost. So that's a three-to-one ratio. That's a pretty good ratio, and I like that. So that's always a good thing to be able to do that. These are all the funds when we do approve a budget. We won't just be approving the general fund. We'll be approving all of these different funds that you see here before you. The finance has to keep up with. So they're not just, they're not just out there every day working on the general fund. You'll see that they're working on all of these funds on a day-to-day basis. So I know their head hurts when they get home, when they get through looking at all these numbers. Let me see what those tones are for all the funds. And that's like I said, that's what you'll be asked to approve when we get to that point. Now, we will have three public hearings on this budget. The first one will be on Thursday, October the 22nd, 21st, at 4:00 at the work session, and we will have another one at 6:00 that same day at the, at the voting session. And then another one on November the 4th at the voting session. At that time, if you so desire, as the Board, you can consider and adopt the FY 22, 2022 budget at that time, if you so desire. So basically, that gives you about 28 days to mill over what I am proposing to you and to look back through your notes and to make any change recommendations that you would like to, additions, deletions, and we can discuss all of those. This is the budget that I would propose to you for 2022. In closing, I want to thank all of our elected officials, our department heads, and the agencies, and their assistance with this budget process. I want to give a special thanks to Ms. Vicki and Ms. Natalie and her entire staff because they work very, very hard to help me get this put together so I can stand here and look like I know what I'm talking about. I also want to thank our County Manager for his direction in keeping his staff engaged throughout this process, and they've done a very good job there. I want to thank y'all because you participated. I think the departments are happy that you participate. I think they like the fact that you're engaged, that you understand what they're asking for. And so I think we're accomplishing what we set out to do there when you participate. And so I'm thankful to you for your participation and making this process go. And I'll answer any questions that you may have today, or you can lull over it, and we can talk about it as we go forward.
Maybe in the day. I gotta look at this.
That was a mouthful, huh?
Just thank you for taking the time. I know this is one of the biggest tasks that a Chairman takes on, and it takes a lot of time and energy and effort along with staff to put this thing together. And so thank you, Billy, for your leadership in putting this together for us.
Thank you. I enjoy the numbers and so enjoy challenges. And so this is a challenge, but I do enjoy this process. All right. County Manager reported. Did I leave you anything to say, Dave?
Thank you. No, good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I'll start out by saying, as you know, recently, we had the Shore Suite event that took place and collected 17.89 tons of debris from the lake. So that has been cleaned up, and thanks to Public Works, Facilities, and all the staff who participated in that, it was a good event. The County will get back an estimated $13,160 from AT&amp;T for the cell phones recycled during our recent upgrade. That, the new phones won't cost us anything. So we are going to get it rebated back to $10,000 roughly. So that takes care of that. What you've heard a lot about in the news and everything is the global chip shortage is affecting all industries and is increasing delivery time for products by months in many cases. Talking with Shannon and them, even, you know, obviously, in the automotive industry is getting hit hard. Plants are shutting down in some cases because they can't get the chips and things that need to go in. So we, I say all that to just ask for patience and delays, and I know some folks have been waiting patiently for their vehicles. Shannon's working very hard on that. They keep on a daily basis and monitoring that type of thing. So just wanted to bring that to your attention as well.
But there's really nothing, Shannon, or y'all can't do anything about it, can you?
Just following the mark.
I went to Walmart the other day. They had a stack full of chips. They had barbecue and Lay's.
Wrong kind of chip.
Set my lead in. Okay. Since November 19th of 2009, nearly every business with Dawson County requires a county business license. And to the Chairman's point a moment ago, in the position he requested with the Planning Department, as of October the 1st, the Planning and Development Department's licensing staff issued 164 new business licenses in 2021. New commercial business applications totaled 73, and this is an interesting number of home occupations were 90, and there was one special event. So home business seems to be a trend that's moving forward, just a kind of a eye-opener as to the numbers that are coming, that we're seeing coming through the, you know, the front area there. Kudos to the Planning Department and their staff for their licensing. Also, Keep Dawson County Beautiful Electronic Recycling Day will be held from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday, October the 9th, at the Walmart Shopping Center. That's the Electronic Recycling, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Saturday, October the 9th, at the Walmart Shopping Center. Dawson County employees are encouraged to wear purple on October the 21st in support of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We'll see that the Fire Department, I believe, is looking at the cancer awareness in utilizing pink, I believe, shirts. And so this will be for domestic violence. And so we're just putting that out there, and it is advertised in our newsletter as well. The inaugural Ghost Walk will be held on October the 28th through the 31st here in downtown Dawsonville. The walking tour, which will start and end at the Racing Hall of Fame, will be utilizing the historic courthouse and jail. Of course, the Chairman has already acknowledged that Christie is our new Human Resources Director, and I want to congratulate her. Let everybody know that, please welcome her onboard. And also, we got also, we have a special birthday this weekend, the Chairman's birthday. So if we can all sing a little farewell.
Get older. Farewell. Throwing me out. What's that about a budget?
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Billy. Happy Birthday to you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
That's it on my report.
Questions from the County Manager. County Attorney Report.
I do not have a public report. Thank you.
I think we do have a need.
Yes, for land acquisition.
Land acquisition things.
And let's go ahead and say land acquisition and litigation.
Land acquisition and litigation. All right, do I have a motion to go in executive session? Motion by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Satterfield, discussion. Your non-please vote. And that's approved 4-0. We'll take about five minutes. We'll meet in the back to discuss land acquisition and potential litigation. Thank you for your attendance. Please feel free to stay with us. We'll be back at 6:00 for our voting session. Thank you.